Easton.
Here.
Counsel Morrison.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Vissinette.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Counsel Ormsby.
Here.
Counsel Downs.
Here.
Counsel Rankin.
Here.
Uh, presentation of town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any. Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from four twenty-eight twenty-two. Town council budget meeting minutes from five-five twenty-two. And town council minutes from three-twenty-four twenty-two. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Posed. Thank you. Item five is receiving review correspondence for on a police call, May second, twenty-twenty-two. Questions on that? Item six is ordinances to consider introduce. We have none. Item seven is discussion items. Uh, first on the agenda is the animal shelter visit discussion. Five counselors went to the animal shelter tonight, met, uh, Deputy Chief Winchester, Deputy, uh, Director Gagin, um, several staff members and volunteers at the shelter. All got an overview. I know Counsel Rankin had been there in the past. I think Paul, you've been there in the past also. So, certainly space needed there. Um, if anybody doesn't think that when they walked in there, um, like, like we all said, they were supposed to do any yeoman job in there, um, with the facility that they have and, and, uh, keeping things upright and going there. So, any other comments? Kathy?
I just had one comment. I had heard in the past that they were possibly looking, uh, down behind the town garage by the trails to build the shelter and to put in a dog park at the same time. Is anything ever discussed about that any further or?
Chief or Sue?
Anybody have any comments on that or?
We have talked about, um, that, well, it was, the idea was raised at one time. I think it was when, um, the council was discussing it and Mr. Hawes, who owns the Silver Lake Estates next door, was talking about noise being an issue, hoping that there could be a difference. But, um, when we talked about it as a, with a dog park attached, there was some feedback from people that they wanted a dog park that was walkable to, as opposed to one that was that far out. That doesn't mean it's not a possibility. That was just some feedback that we had received at that time. But there isn't, I, I think that the question isn't necessarily as much, do we need one? It, it, your question is a good one, is what's the best location for it? That hasn't been explored further than that initial discussion.
I, I just thought, you know, they have the trails down back. That would be good walking spots for the dogs. Um, it, it was just a thought to have more room and maybe that wouldn't disturb the people in the park and be quieter further down. It was something that I had thought about and kind of tossing around. Just looking for other people's feedback.
Ed?
Yeah. I know we talked about that before, but, um, I'm on the same page with Kathy. I, I I, like Sue said, it's not a question of do we need to do something with the shelter. Yeah, we do. It needs to be substantially bigger and have a bathroom and and I, I think the spot it's in now just isn't a good fit. I think, uh, behind the town garage with a dog park or access to the trails is much, would be a much better location myself. Cause I, I don't think there's much to save behind the transfer station. I've, I've heard mention of should, could we save the slabs? The slabs are so small, that's kind of not, not an issue in my mind, anyway.
Tammy?
Um, I feel the same way, um, Kathy and Ed do. I think that going down and looking, I mean, just the aesthetic of it alone, if we're gonna have this nice, you know, building and facility there, and then we have them coming down through into the transfer station. Just if, if the feel of it for me is, is hard, you know, we have them, you know, next to the dump, so, um, I, I, I think looking and really looking at behind the town garage is, is definitely something we should do. And I also think that, um, looking at the plan, um, I like it. I, it, it's around thirteen hundred square feet, um, and it has, you know, some, some really nice features to it. And I think if we're gonna have a full-time position, then we need to have a facility that's up to date and it's fitting for the animals that we have in there and do that, so.
Mark?
I'd agree with the other three that, you know, we ought to at least explore moving it. Um, it'll be better in the long run, is my opinion.
Anybody else?
We already own the land, so that's not an issue. Just a matter of what would be necessary to construct there with, um.
Is that, uh, is that town water and sewer there?
No. It is not.
Sean?
We, we have not discussed this, but obviously we'll go wherever we're put. We haven't really get into as far as where we're going and just at the beginning stages, so we would not object to anything that the council comes up with, obviously.
Jimmy?
Do we have town water and sewer at the, uh, Public Works?
No, we do not.
It doesn't go that far out, okay.
No.
Um, uh, from what I saw, uh, she needs an office of some sort, and she needs more storage room. That was her complaint. It didn't seem to be a complaint that there wasn't enough room for the dogs, per se, uh, or, or the cats. Her, her major concern was office space. She has to carry all of her bookwork around with her because there's no place to put it in there. And, uh, she complained about the, uh, storage area. And she has a building out there that's stuffed, crammed full. And I saw that, uh, the two, uh, dog kennel cages that are, that are on the further end of the building where the dogs are kept, those two are also used for storage at this point. So probably a, a building of probably twelve by twenty maybe, or something along that line, would be all she needs out there at this point. Yes, my.
One of the things we talked about was, um, she's carrying in water and then I asked the question if that water's been tested. And I think they're just going off anecdotal evidence that it's, it's bad. I don't know if we've ever had the water tested out there to check it.
We, we will have that water tested right now.
Thanks, Kathy.
She did say that the storage building was turned into housing the cats. And the bottom cages in the storage building, in the wintertime freezes the blankets to the floor because of the condensation. And so that was a big concern in the storage place where they're housing the cats too. So, that has to be fixed.
Paul?
Just real quick, agree with everything that's been said here, just a consideration that I know, I'm sure would come up further along, but there would have to be some sort of, at least a look at the traffic pattern in and out of the town garage area, I think, as a result of this. Might even need to look at some paving around there, um, especially down behind to a certain point. Just something to keep in mind if, if we were to do that.
One of the other concerns that she had was, you know, with the, with the transfer station being closed Monday and Tuesday, um, it's tough to run the gate. And as I was leaving, I was thinking, um, would there be a possibility to move the gate up closer to the transfer station and still allow access down to the back? Um, I don't know if, what, what the thoughts are on that either.
Well, it, it, my thought, if you're asking Mr. Mayor, is that gate being where it is, when it stops people, that's, it's in a pretty visible location. And if somebody pulls up to the gate and for whatever reason wanted to break into the transfer station, I can't imagine why, but it, you know, let's imagine a worst-case scenario, it would be harder to see from Central Street. Just my two cents on that.
What would be our next step, Sue?
What can agenda this for? Well, actually, you could have, um, your infrastructure committee meet to discuss location, plan, estimate. Cause if it's something that you're thinking of doing, um, it would need to be ready for a referendum by the end of August. If, because it would probably be, be more than three hundred thousand dollars.
Thoughts, folks?
I would, I would just like to find out what options we have before we go any further. That's my thought.
That sounds good to everybody. We can send it to the infrastructure committee at the next meeting and, or the meeting after and, and start the process and see where we, see where we end up. Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good.
Sean?
Just a comment on the gate. At some point, if we're gonna leave that shelter there, I'm gonna recommend we put some kind of controllable gate in there, uh, so it's easier access, remote control or whatever to open the gate to get in there. Because what happens on a weekly basis is they go in, if the gate swings open or stays open and doesn't get shot, people go in there to drop the trash off. When it is closed, they'll either draw, on days off, they'll drop the trash at the gate or they have been known to, around the gate, through the gate, open the gate, leave their trash at the front of the transfer station. So the gate is something that needs to be addressed if, if it's, the shelter's left there.
Fair enough. Thank you. I think that we'll, we'll discuss that in the committee also, so. Any other comments? All right, if we set that, Sue, for an infrastructure committee?
We'll do that.
Thank you. Next item is the assessor discussion, cost schedules. Caitlin?
Um, yeah, um, so I don't know if you guys read, um, the piece that I wrote up, but essentially, quick overview of cost schedules. Um, cost schedules are what helps make sure everything is assessed fair and equitably. Um, so for example, as we've seen, the increase in sales prices, which translates to the increase in value in homes, um, it'd be pretty standard to go across the board and increase the cost schedules to, to reflect those changes. Um, I was looking at the process of getting that done for this coming commitment, um, when we found out that during the last revale, um, rather than change the cost schedules, the cost schedules were increased or decreased or changed to fit the value that the home should have been at the time of the revale, rather than the actual cost schedules themselves. Um, so I'm beginning the process after this commitment of going through and correcting homes so that they reflect the right age, grade, condition. Um, and then my goal is to come back to you with those all corrected, and then I have somebody lined up to work with me to create appropriate cost schedules to get us where we need to be value-wise.
Thank you. Questions?
No, just that was, you're right up, Caitlin was very informative, um, and, um, the grid made sense, um, and, and the examples you provided were, um, that, that helped, that, that helped paint the picture of what you were trying to accomplish there. So, no, I appreciated all of that.
I guess my, my, my only concern is in a year and a half, when we have a massive downturn, are we, are we staring this over again, or how do, how do we handle that?
Nope. So that's the hope of the cost schedules, um, is that if your house is a typical three-one-hundred, which is the most basic home, standard fixtures, all of that, I can go in and adjust the values for all three-one-hundred rans, and they're all gonna see the same reflection and fluctuation. Um, the way they are right now is if he, if they were moved up and somewhere moved down to get that same cost, if I affect the cost schedules that way, then they're gonna see differences rather than be equal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sue?
The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, Caitlin let me know that our ratio this year didn't drop, that we're able to, if you remember last year, we, we can't get the full value of our homestead exemption because our value, our ratio to what the state values us compared to what our values are had slipped them up due to all the crazy sales that we didn't quite get it all. But the good news is it didn't slip any further this year, which doesn't sound like a great thing, but it is a good thing. It means that that there won't be any adjustment in the homestead downward this year, like we had to do last year. It was minor, but it was still a percentage because our value was not close enough to the states in order to retain a hundred percent of it. But Caitlin had let me know last week, week before, time flies, that we were, that that's not something we would have to worry about this year in terms of, of that kind of another adjustment on people's homesteads.
Thank you. And Caitlin, thank you for that informative information. Uh, I asked the questions because if folks have questions, can they stop in and see you at the town office?
Always, yeah.
Thank you. Next, Planning Partnership Initiative, MDOT Downtown Beautification Committee. Sorry, Sue, I don't know anything about this one.
Um, Caitlin, I believe, is going to be discussing this one as well.
Okay, I didn't know if it was you or if it was me. Um, so I have recently taken over the town position as part of the beautification committee. Um, and after a few meetings with them and kind of getting a feel for what their overall goals are for the town, um, we had a meeting with DOT and they came in and they addressed some of the issues like, um, the sidewalks in front of the old stubborn town glass building, the, how steep they are, and they're not necessarily accessible to everybody. Um, some of them are pretty narrow, which is hard for cleaning them and things like that. So DOT suggested, um, what's called a Planning Partnership Initiative, a PPI, um, where they're gonna come in, um, if we get the okay from everybody, they would come in and work with the town and develop a plan to address all of the issues or changes that we would wanna see. Um, and that can be ranging from the location of crosswalks, um, lighting, signage, um, turning out of cross streets, sidewalks, trees, and all of that stuff that is on the list for beautifying your downtown. Um, the PPI is a fifty percent match between DOT and the town. Um, the good part of, the best part of the PPI is that it also leads into, um, what's called a VPI, which is a much larger scale project where it's, um, federally funded and then DOT, eighty percent, eighty percent federally, ten percent DOT, and then a ten percent match from the town for that one. And that is where they come in, they actually do all of the work. That was presented in the PPI. Um, so it's kind of a gateway into a much larger scale project in the hopes that we could get there. Um, after talking with DOT on Monday, it's looking like the town match would be, for the PPI, would be in the range of thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars. Um, and that's a fifty percent match with DOT.
Thank you. Questions?
Just to add to this, the, to, to think about what this stepping stone process, if, all the work that was done on Route Three going into Bar Harbor and down through that, all of that was a VPI that was pre, the precursor to it was a PPI in order to address traffic and many other things in that area, but there, the downtown in Waterville that's been redone, that whole process started with a PPI where they looked at all of it and segwayed to a VPI, which the one in Bar Harbor was ten million dollars, eight, eighty percent federal, ten percent state and local, but it addressed huge amounts and the kind of things that we're talking about, which is lighting and, and maybe underground, um, utility, you know, that these are the kind of things that come out of this. And if there's a way to do that and end up with only ten percent of the cost, it, it's something that, um, that we were in talking when Caitlin got this information, that made more sense than um, starting to do things in, in the downtown area without a real plan of what the whole picture might look like if, if it was addressed at once. So that is the.
I guess, I guess she's answered most of what I was gonna ask. I, I did wanna know, you, you mentioned a, a ten percent match by the town, and then you said a thirty-five percent match by the town and the DOT. So what, how, how much is it gonna cost us? Bottom line.
So for the PPI, um, it's a fifty percent match from the town to DOT. And they're estimating the fifty percent match for that to be about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars.
Thirty-five to forty thousand?
Yep, um, the ten percent match is up the road with the VPI.
Okay.
How many other towns are involved in this, Caitlin? Do you know?
Um, so it would just be us.
Yeah, my question is, are other towns pursuing this also? Do we know, or is this something that DOT approached us for?
Um, so the, it was Sanford currently has one going on. That's a pretty big one. That's twenty thousand dollars, or twenty million dollars for the VPI. Um, so that would be a good one to look into, and I could send you some information for that. Um, but kind of was in conjunction with, um, the beautification committee out to DOT. And so then it turns, DOT back and said, here's a good option for your town. Um, and then we started getting the information that way.
Great, great. Any other questions?
I'd be lying if I didn't say anything about the fact that I, I I, because my question was around the, the possibility of doing something different, for example, with utility lines running down Main Street. I would be lying if I didn't tell you that that possibility is, um, interesting to me.
Anything else? Thank you, Caitlin.
In order, just one more thing, in order to to decide participation or not, um, I would need to put a resolve on the council agenda for discussion as to whether or not you want to move forward with a PPI or not.
Mark?
Yeah, Caitlin, do you think this would, does this give us an engineering plan for sidewalks? I mean, that's something we've talked about doing outside of this.
Yep, um, so the PPI is gonna end up giving us a plan for pretty much anything that we address that we would like to have a plan for. Um, and then the VPI is when they put it all into effect. So we'll, we'll have to put out RFPs for engineers and landscapers and all of that to generate the plans. Um, and that's all we're gonna get out of a PPI, is all of the plans, and then we get to put them into action with the VPI.
So for perspective, Sue, maybe you could speak to this. If we were gonna try to, you know, figure out the sidewalk system in town, what would we be spending with an engineering firm to take on a, that component of something like this, which would take on much more?
I, I didn't hear part of what you said, Mike.
That's, I think, what he, I think what he's asking is, this is one-stop shopping instead of compared to piecemealing everything out more, and it gives us a bigger overall plan that we can then choose, I guess, à la carte, offer them what we have, instead of basically taking different pieces separately and, and spending more money separately on each piece.
The other thing that it does is this planning work is more than just a template. It's the roadmap that then the VPI puts into effect. Uh, I mean, it figures the total cost of all these things that that the town would have identified as things that it wanted done, and then, um, develop a plan to bring them all to fruition. The one on, in Bar Harbor on MDI, took almost ten years to get it finalized, but they, the funding was there and they just kept working through it. Um, they had a lot more communities involved in that one, just because of that's the island, but Waterville, when they did this, again, once you have the map, the funding follows planning for construction.
Um, and so then they also stated that if we get the approval relatively soon, um, the PPI process should be done by next May, um, is what they estimated the timeline would be, and then we could jump into applying for the VPI. So within a year, we could be already in the process of putting all of those plans to work.
I'd be supportive of a resolve, I guess.
Everybody okay with Sue putting in for resolve or more discussion there?
Yes.
All right. Next is Jacob Pond, Bucks Mills Road Culvert Bid Discussion.
I provided with you with the bids on the Jacob Pond and Bucks Mill Road culverts, and, um, when this was approved in twenty-twenty, the maximum amount that, of the town match was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a total project of seven hundred and fifty thousand. And clearly the bids are over that. And, um, I reached out to the engineer that did the plans, um, to ask him if the state would consider, um, kicking in the difference over what we had obligated in order to get these done, because there are a number of communities that have backed away from doing the projects because of the cost of construction, and so the state has money. And he indicated that the state gave us a, the different option was for us to turn the grants we got back and apply for the new ones they have, because the new ones they're doing as of this year, instead of ninety thousand each or a hundred and twenty-five thousand each. But there would be no guarantee that we'd receive funding, and even if it, it did, it would still put us at a, at a place where the voters had not authorized us to, to do more than that out of our share. That five hundred and sixty thousand dollars was it. And so he has then reached out to other organizations, the Nature Conservancy, I believe, and others that, for whom these two culverts are among the highest priority in the state for for replacement under the whole fish, fish passage thing. And so he's reached out to other entities who, to see if they may put funding towards that. I, I don't have the answer on that yet. I, what I can tell you tonight is that you can't approve what we have here unless you decide you only want to do one culvert. And, and that you could do that, but you would be doing it more than the share, so to speak, that we authorized, when the voters authorized two to be replaced. So, um, we have the, um, the bids, but I'm in hopes by your next council meeting, then I have an answer on if we are going to find any additional funding or we're not, because if we don't, we can't move forward. Unless we go back to the voters and ask for more money, and that would still negate this, because these have to be used by twenty-twenty-three.
And I can't imagine those bids are gonna last that long either, so, um, I think where you're at, Sue, is the right choice, and see what comes back, and we'll, we'll make a decision at our next meeting.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that? Next item, uh, Borrego Proposal for Contract Zone for Solar Project.
You had received an email, um, from Borrego, um, In regard to a request for a contract zone amendment for a location of a. A solar project um in an area of the community that's not currently zoned for that. We have representatives. Um from Borrego, if I'm pronouncing that correctly here this evening, who wish to address you on that subject.
Sure, uh I'll chime in here. Hi, I'm I'm Greg Roscher. I'm a project developer at Borrego. I'm joined by Jared Connell, who's our VP of Project Development in New England. Um Borrego's been around since nineteen eighty. Uh we brought over two gigawatts of solar energy to the country's grids. Um our core markets have historically been Massachusetts, California, New York, Illinois, and Maine. Um though we operate in many more states. Uh we've developed dozens of projects in Maine so far, um and we're in the process of developing uh the project that we're here today to discuss. It's a mature project in that it has an interconnection agreement with CMP. Um and a lease agreement with the landowner, Luanne Lawson. Um it's located at two fifty-eight Route One. Um I don't wanna repeat everything from the letter um that we sent to the town council, but it's it's a good site for commercial solar development. It's located within the commercial two zone, adjacent to all different uh commercial uses and also bound by a CMP transmission easement. Um and it has no visibility concerns given the project's location on the property. So we were just hoping to open the discussion about a potential contract zone agreement for a solar project at this location. Um as it appears to be the only way to develop solar in Bucksport outside of the landfill parcels in the industrial zone. Um obviously, we don't expect any contracts to be signed after this meeting. Um we're just, we're happy to be speaking with you all prior to submitting an application to the planning board. Um because we understand that a CZA for this purpose was rejected last year. And uh we're just thankful thankful for the opportunity to present what we believe is a very appropriate site for a solar project. And um I can share my screen if you'd like um to show the uh project location, though it was part of that letter that I I sent in, so. Um whatever you all would like, um I'd be happy to do that.
Questions for anybody? Thoughts?
Will will this project bring any jobs into the community?
Um that's a, that's a good question. We could um, we could explore the idea of using local subcontractors and. And that kinda thing. Um it certainly brings jobs to Maine in general, but um. Uh we can certainly explore um providing as much benefit locally as we can.
Do you usually bring your own crews to do this kinda work?
Um we do, we oftentimes our our EPC team um is the one that ultimately builds a project. We do sell our projects, so we don't hold projects on our balance sheet. And our our EPC team is often still the one to build it, um though though we aren't owning it. And we hire out subcontractors that are are generally local to build the projects.
Will will uh the person whose property this is, will this be, belong to her when it's finished?
Uh there's a a lease agreement that we have with the landowner, so they'll receive annual lease payments um for our rights to use the land that we would use.
Yes, and your home port is where?
Our New England headquarters is in Lowell, Massachusetts. We have offices in San Diego, Oakland, um Chicago, New York. Kind of all over.
So the money generated by this will go out of this area?
Um no, I mean, the the project is meant to benefit uh Maine Maine residents or businesses who subscribe to the power generated by the project. It's meant to bring jobs to Maine. Um there there's many benefits to Maine and um. Not, uh we do have um. Our operations in Maine are meant to to benefit Maine, but yes, I mean, there are. It it is a branch within our New England team.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is this a community solar project or are you selling back to the grid all of it?
Um it would be, it community solar project. I'm not, it's not totally clear whether we would sell to businesses or, you know, or residents yet.
Well, when do you, when do you make that? I mean, that was the same question we had for the other folks and they came with no answers and that seriously makes a big difference.
Well, it does. Um and this is a mature project that we would wanna um understand the path forward for. Subscri subscribers as early as possible. I mean, there's, there's a ton of appetite in Maine for residents to purchase power from these projects, so we do believe that's a. Very viable option. Um and we also have relationships with um with commercial entities as well who could purchase the power. So it's not something that we're we're concerned with and um it's something that we we plan to, you know. Have wrapped up, of of course, by the time the project would be ready for financing and and that whole thing.
Well, and again, I think that's one of the concerns we have in town is that the these solar projects to sell back to the grid can go anywhere in the state. And we're, as 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 you folks know, and and you were told when you came here, we are, the last time the council looked at this, we are very averse to changing our zoning. Um you know, and if it's not gonna su- support the town, I'm I'm still not not for this. So I I that's where I stand with it. Any other questions, comments? Danny?
How long is the lease? Is it year to year?
It is twenty-year agreement. Um it can, there are five-year extension options, so the project would typically. Be in the ground for thirty to forty years.
What happens then?
Uh the project would either be decommissioned or it's possible that renewal of the lease could happen. Um and equipment's changed out, um but the project would be decommissioned and and the the land restored.
So when, so when you decommission those, you take those away? The panels?
The equipment, yes. And so it would ultimately be um, the panels would ultimately be be recycled and held off.
Mr. Connell?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in to respond to uh one of your questions, Mr. Stewart. Um one of the reasons why Greg probably gave his response about um. Not having a final decision on community solar versus if um this would be for commercial um or CNI. Um with the power or power credits being sold to CNI is that. There is, there's varying room in in either side of the program and so uh we usually watch, you know, how much headroom there is for the. Community solar side of things versus the commercial side of things and as we get closer to. Putting a shovel in the ground, make a final decision on which avenue to go in, but if um. If it would make a difference, we have done things in the past like um, you know, kinda shoehorned the project for community solar. Um and given uh the town where the project is located. You know, a a a window of opportunity to, you know, where residents in Bucksport could sign up. We we could hold it for the first, you know, hundred and twenty days or something that subscriptions were available. For Buckport residents to exclusively sign up for if if that would be um viewed as a positive thing and a benefit for the town residents.
So.
Did I understand you to say that you don't hold these projects? It after construction to whom, who, who is the owner once they're constructed?
Yeah, that's correct. We're 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 developers, so um we, when the project is completely permitted and the subscriptions and the power sales, everything is contracted for. Utility agreements are in place. Um at that point, we pursue financing and long-term ownership of of the project. That's the most common business model um for how these projects are are developed. Um I'd venture to say that that's probably how, you know, ninety-plus percent of the projects that have gone in or have been developed in Maine so far are are done. We, it's not, you know, an infinite world of of buyers and long-term holders of these projects that are developed, so, you know, I think. Of our projects that we've developed in Maine, um the buyers and long-term holders of of the projects we've developed are, is a list of about. Three or four parties that um that we've done business with that end up holding the assets at the end of development.
So it wouldn't, you're just developing it. You wouldn't be the long, you wouldn't be the long-term relationship with the town. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So do you have a buyer at this point that's that's in position to purchase this when it's completed?
Uh not at this moment, no, that that part of the process usually comes um. Usually comes after permitting and after all the interconnection and after all the agreements are in place.
And uh. Do you normally have a a long waiting period for people to buy them or do they go quickly?
I think going fairly fast. I think, you know, this project, um Greg, what's the, what's the DC size of this project?
Um about five megawatts.
Yeah, so it depends. So if the, if if it was a CNI project, we could you, we could probably contract that with one large business or a user of power. If it is a community solar project, once the subscription process starts. The pace is usually around somewhere, you know, anywhere from half to um one megawatt per month. So it's probably like a three to six month process to fully subscribe it if it were to be a a community solar project.
And you, you're pretty much gonna be all in fields where you're building, right?
Um this is a a wooded property. There is some partially uh logged and um open area, but um it is a a wooded property.
So you will be removing some trees to accommodate your acreage?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
On the de- decommissioning part of the owners that you sell it to, are they then responsible for the um removal or decommissioning?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
What, uh what, how complicated is the process of buying into getting your power from this this facility?
It's pretty simple. Um there are a number of of um subscriber outfits that are out there in the market. Um they all have websites. Um I actually have signed up for one myself. Um and it probably took. Five to ten minutes total.
And this is pretty much done through the power company, just like if I wanted the standard or a different. Through the power company, I tell them what I want my power to come from and. Is that pretty much what what you go through?
Yeah, this is a little bit different than that, so um you would still get your normal bill from from CMP. And you would get credits, uh subscribers of to the project get credits on that. Um and then they would, you get a a second bill from the project. Um and you pay for the credits that you, whatever allocation that you purchase from the project.
Oh, so so central main power just doesn't. Pay you from from what I use and they they say, okay, I'm I'm using this guy's uh power.
That's exactly right, yeah.
And CMP just goes ahead and pays them, right? I pay my bill to CMP and they pay the power company.
Uh no, you you actually, you do get two separate bills, so every kilowatt hour that is allocated to a subscriber from the project. It basically backs a kilowatt hour off your bill that you would have otherwise paid CMP for. And then um so your your CMP bill will be reduced and then you have a second bill to the, that you pay to the, to the project for the kilowatt hours that you that you purchase from the project.
No. Simple. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So.
Um. I'm sure we've all received them, um the offers in the mail from people who, um entities who want you to buy into. You would be amazed at how many calls I get because many of them mentioned that there's a project in Bucksport. And to the best of my knowledge, there isn't at this point, so I don't know. How we got on the list of where, cause people call and ask me where the project is in Bucksport. And we don't have one. Um because they, they think that there is um that opportunity, so it it's. But it's just like the cards you get in the mail, those cards would be selling quote unquote or or offering credits. That could be attributed back to this project, but it's not a direct connection. Those sellers represent many projects that. That they're, they're get giving you credits from. It's not just this particular project, is that correct?
Well, the way I under, the way I understand it is that's only for commercial entities, that residential folks aren't. Able to do that through the law that's existing in the state other than if it's a community project, is that correct?
Yeah, there there's two, there's two parts of the, uh it's called the Net Energy Billing Program, so projects can register for the um. CNI portion of that and those are the projects that contract with large commercial entities.
But not, but not individuals?
Correct, yep. And and there's also uh the other portion of the of the net energy billing program is called the Kilowatt Hour Program. And that's where um most of the the projects sign up with residential subscribers. Um and the credits are are actually, they can be allocated anywhere in um in the same utility company, so. Um i- if you uh like, as long as a project is located in CMP service territory, that project can allocate credits to any other town or city that is also. Uh in CMP's territory and same goes for Verson.
But that still is only for commercial, correct?
No, that that P, that part of it, um uh residential um accounts can sign up for the Kilowatt Hour Program.
But it doesn't matter where the solar system, the solar farm is, correct?
That's right, as long as it's same utility, any residential account uh that's located in that same utility can can sign up for for a project.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Um we will take this to a committee and we'll make a decision there.
Thank you, really appreciate your folks' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Next item is. Ball Field Wall RSU Facility Committee Meeting Results Ed.
Yeah, we met last week and uh. Basically, the discussion of whether to move the field or fix. Well, it's, it's both, people wanted the planned repair or to move and the pricing, cause the bids we've got, they're not gonna be valid for the ideas that are coming out there. So that that item has been just tabled for the time being, needing more information and truly decide what we wanna do. And the naming of the fields, there was a suggestion of having the council do a contest or just get general. Uh input from from anyone. Um or do we name it at all if we don't know what we're gonna do with it? I don't, I don't know, that's, but that's the gist of the meeting.
Okay, questions? Paul?
Seems like a relatively minor point, but I would be in favor of uh doing some sort of process to name that field. Um I think we've had a lot of conversation in Bucksport of late around that field. There is a lot of history around that field, um and depending on your age and how long you've lived in Bucksport, you could talk to that history quite well. Um and I, and it just seems like if that's. If everything I've just said is true, um it deserves a name that the community can can be behind. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that? Anybody against that? Sue, we'll put that on your charges to figure out a way, I guess, to get it out there. How's that?
So solicit input for naming of the field, yes.
There's probably already suggestions being emailed to the enterprise as we speak, so.
I will work with our Community and Economic Development Director to figure out a process for us to. Do.
Perfect. Uh next is Town Manager Evaluation Results.
The only reason that's on here wasn't, it was that when we ended the meeting last time, we ended with our last regu, we ended with an executive session. And then it didn't go back on TV and. Generally speaking, there's some sort of statement about whether you're keeping me or dumping me or. Something along those lines and so that was the point of having, so that the general public knew. How we ended that.
You're here tonight, so I'm gonna say that we decided to keep you for. You're here tonight, so I'm gonna say that we decided to keep you for a little while longer. I I I'm speaking for myself, I assume the rest of the council was okay with that decision. Thank you.
Yes, wholeheartedly, yes.
Uh, next is Agenda Items, Resolve 202248 to Approve the Request of the Bucksport Bay Business Coalition for Funding of the 2022 Bay Festival, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? I will say, I will say that it's tough for me to sit here and give a for-profit um business funds when we're struggling to hand out funds to nonprofits um with a need. We've had this request in the past and and I still have a hard time supporting it, so.
Yeah, I guess my question is is is, and I I know this is a a prediction, but I mean, is she making money off of this? Like, you know, it's and we don't know that because they're coming in, you know, could be five hundred people, it could be two thousand people. But like, I'm all for having an event and helping out with the event, but I feel like we we set our rules for festivals and then now we're gonna pay for it ourselves. And I I mean, I'd almost be for something like this if it's like, you're, you know, you're paying that back, it's a help, and then you're paying it back till your profit. You know, I don't know, I I I struggle with it.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern was there was a lot of time and effort spent on the policies that we just finished up regarding festivals. I I can't get behind it, not when we just just went through this process. That's my thing.
Mark?
I'm gonna agree with Ed and Dan, you know, we just went through a process and I think we'd be setting a precedence we might really regret if we fund for-profit businesses.
Anything else before we take a vote?
Well, I gotta say too, I wanna say publicly too, like, I really appreciate the things that Terry's trying to bring forward and do. Like, I really, like, we need this stuff and, you know, I I support those things that that she wants to do, and I think she puts a lot of effort behind it, but I just doesn't line up.
Paul?
I guess I guess the question I have and and um and I'm probably not asking the right group, unless Sue has had conversations that would indicate an answer to it to this. But without this funding, will there be a festival?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I think that there's already a pretty substantial contractual relationship on a number of fronts for this with um with that um group. I uh I think that that what that she has received funding from a number of local businesses that are um are funding this. Um, the awkward part for the council is the for-profit versus nonprofit status of this business. I I recognize that and the, you know, the does she make money or not? I I don't think that it's necessarily gonna make a lot of money, but the next request you get from a for-profit business to cover the cost of their security could be the issue.
Well, I guess that's the point, Paul, is that, you know, this isn't to really cover a lot of the doing costs, it's to basically cover our police costs and security costs. And again, I think we're setting a precedent that uh that will be the dangerous slope to go down.
Yeah, I just I it felt like that was a question that you, you know, if this if this was the tipping point between a festival or not, I I don't know, I don't even know that it changes the conversation. I but I think it is, you know, question I needed or at least wanted to address.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got something to say, didn't we have a a group in front of us that stood there in front of us and told us that they made enough profit to give out uh money to specialized groups in in the schools? Now, that was the same thing, we gave them money or or they came and asked for money, I don't know if we gave them money prior to this, but they made such a profit that they were able to put that money into uh uh school programs or school clubs or whatever it was. And then they came and asked us for money to to do their group this year. I don't know how the vote went, but I voted against it. I said, no, we're not gonna give out to people that can do that and then still come to us and ask for money to sponsor their their uh festival. That's my take on it. We've already told them no, or I have, I don't know if the rest of you gave them any money or not.
Anything else? Jake?
Uh, Counselor Eastman?
I don't approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Disapprove.
Uh, Mayor Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
No.
Mayor Stewart?
No.
Counselor Ormsby?
No.
Counselor Downs?
No.
Counselor Rankin?
No.
Next is the Hiring a Firefighter AEMT Hannah Flashbark, swearing in at a future meeting.
Just one second.
She's gonna go back.
I apologize, um I had a person who wishes to speak to the council um under uh the public comment section, so I had to email them a link to be able to directly address you, I'm sorry.
Is this swearing?
We notified you that we had hired Hannah uh to replace Chris Grendal, who had um resigned.
Okay, thank you. Item ten is approval of quick things, discharges of deeds, we have done. Item eleven is Town Manager Report.
Yes, I'm happy to report that the Marina will be open for business as of this Saturday. Um, it actually, the the date was the fifteenth generally, but they're opening on Saturday because um Sunday is not supposed to be that great a day. Um, also on Saturday, it's Make Bucksport Beautiful Day. And there will be someone at the town office between eight thirty and nine on Saturday morning, if people wanna pick up trash bags and um pick up a coupon for free ice cream if they participate in that. And for anybody who can't make it during those times, if they come in Wednesday or Thursday of next week to see me, I can get them an ice cream cone coupon for participating. Our code officer, um Luke Cavelli, met with um contractors for Whole Oceans this week, and we anticipate that site work should begin within a month, which is good news for us. Um, Tom Crickelair, the consultant for Down East Transportation, um came to Bucksport on the eleventh and rode the bus and then had a meeting at the Senior Center. Um, he anticipates having information um on ways to expand or improve our bus service by the twenty-fourth of this month. And so I'll have it available for you at your meeting on the twenty-sixth. I will be participating as a member of the Board of Environmental Protection in the NECCC CMP Quarter Appeal that is being held on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. It is now being held as a hybrid, I will be able to attend remotely because it's the actual meeting is in um Farmington. I hope you've all had a chance to see the work done with the Mulcher Mini Excavator um that we've rented to do roadside work. I have had positive feedback from many people who have both seen it in action and like what the results look like. Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust is applying for funding through the Land for Means Future Program for the purchase of land in Orland and Bucksport. The purchase was actually made last year involving approximately three hundred and sixty acres, a hundred acres of which is in Bucksport. It, when I sent you this report, I also sent you an email um from the trust that outlines where this um property is. Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust pays taxes on the properties that they have in Bucksport. And it have indicated that at such time that they they asked for um the exemption to which they may be entitled, that they would pay a a payment in lieu of taxes, which is what we do with some other entities. But in order to apply for funding through the Land for Means Future for this property they've already purchased, they need a letter from the town supporting their application for the funding. And so my question to you is whether anyone has any objections. I write a letter of support for their them to acquire it, to find get funding for that land.
In Sue's report, there was a copy of sort of a way that it would be written, anybody have any objections to that? Seeing none?
Okay, um I've had calls from a resident who's concerned about a sign posted on private property on Central Street that uses what many would consider to be profanity. Um, these are not the first calls received in regard to the sign, and our Public Safety Director has contacted the Attorney General's Office um on more than one occasion to see if there was anything that we could do in regard to that sign. And according to the AG's office, since the sign is on private property, not impeding traffic, et cetera, et cetera, it falls under the category of protected free speech. I told this to the uh most recent caller and he asked if the council might consider sending the person a letter, asking them to reconsider. And he also was is the person who um I sent an invitation so they could call into this meeting if he chose to. And um I had sent that, so I I don't see him yet, but I sent him the invitation.
I would strongly discourage that we send any letter at all um regarding free speech issues.
I I also sent you the most recent um email that Public Safety Director Gigan received this afternoon on this subject.
I appreciate the the AG's input, but I would be way out of our lane to to start dictating how folks can post on their property, Danny.
I I'm sure this has been done and it seems simple, but did, because has anybody just asked if you would take it down politely, like just, hey, do you mind taking that down? Has anybody just asked him?
Public Safety Director Gagan can.
I I have met with him and spoken with him uh for a time, it was kind of marked in with black marker that the words that people are talking about, other times it was split up in half, like a bowtie type thing. Uh, since then, it's been put back down and signs have been added to it, so. Um, I have met with him and discussed it with him um for sure.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any different feelings?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I don't think it's awesome that it's there, that, you know, kids driving by and see it, but as a town, I this we don't wanna tread down the path of impeding on people's First Amendment, because we're gonna be in trouble after that, but yeah, I don't think it's awesome.
I agree with you, Ed, but if we if we go after one, we're gonna have ten, you know.
I'll set, Sue?
Ye- yes, I just was bringing that to your attention.
Yep, no, please don't, please don't send, please don't send the letter on behalf of the town.
I I would not have done that without a request from this council, so. Um, so the other, tonight, our budget involves a presentation about the fire department budget proposals and the insurances and benefits proposed. Our next council meeting on May twenty-sixth will provide an opportunity for the council to review the proposal in its entirety, decide what amounts to allocate for non-municipal agencies, and to determine a budget to go to a public hearing on June ninth. Does that sound like a workable schedule? Although the charter requires that the budget be adopted by the third week in June, a few years ago, we waited until the fourth week in June to have a clearer financial picture of where the state funding stood. If you did not wanna go outside the charter provision and we're not ready to send out a budget on the twenty-sixth, we could also hold a special meeting on June second to finish it and get it advertised for public hearing and schedule a special meeting for the third week of June for the adoption and therefore stay within the guidelines of our charter. I'm just.
I suggest we stay with the twenty-sixth, see where we stand, and if we have to make a decision on that day, we can.
Okay, I'm just mapping out sort of where it is. And finally, the beta version of our new website is being reviewed by staff now, and we hope to be able to have that unveiled soon.
Any questions, comments?
Yep, just a quick question to make sure I'm clear on the budget schedule, because just for a personal reason, I am going to be out of town um for I I the the week of the second council meeting, it um not regular council meeting in June. So are we still planning to vote on the budget at the ninth meeting, or are we looking to move the vote to the budget in the month?
If you were to stay within the charter, you would either vote it on it on the ninth or you would vote or have a special meeting and vote on it on the sixteenth, which is is the third week in June.
Okay.
So it would be one of those two.
I would be okay with either of those, I don't leave until the seventeenth, so, okay, whatever works, yep.
Get out of town.
I don't wanna miss the budget vote, but I'm not asking this council to schedule around me either, I was just asking out of curiosity.
Thank you. Any questions? Again, I wanna thank the uh.
I I got some questions on the uh uh Managers Report. First of all, I I have gone around and seen the work that they did with that shredding machine, that they shredded those trees along the edge of the road. I don't think it looks good, and I talked to a person who was delivering a meal that lives right across the street from it, she wants him out there to clean it up. She don't think it looks good, she don't wanna look out her window and see that mess.
If you give me the address, I'll make sure that that gets taken care of.
I don't know what it matters, if you go out there and look at that, you'll see. I don't have her address, I just know where she lives. Just what I've heard from the public, that's all. And I I see a lot more places along there that really don't look very good. If we could do something about that, that'd be nice. I certainly wouldn't want them to come out in front of my house and leave that.
Anything else? Next is Public Hearings, our License Approvals, Liquor License Renewal for Grown and Wine Design, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Jake?
Counselor Eastman? I didn't hear you, Mark, I'm sorry.
Approve.
Uh, Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. I assume Jake can eat four or five signatures for that on Monday?
We do, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Discussion of Items Not on the Agenda for the Council and the Public, Sue, you said you had somebody on the phone? You're muted, Sue.
I sent out um the link to this meeting so that they could call in to speak with you directly, and it was the gentleman who um wanted to discuss the sign.
Okay. Well, we'll wait, we're at that point, um anybody on the council have anything? Luke?
There we go, uh, what did you say they wanted to discuss, Sue?
The the Central Street sign.
Okay, so that's different than the, so um.
Yes.
Did those other people get a link for eighty-three Franklin?
It's for eighty-three Franklin.
I can speak on their behalf for a minute, I guess, or Rich might chime in. Um, so there's some folks looking at buying the Masonic Hall at eighty-three Franklin Street. Um, and the one of the proposed uses um would be a. Um, and the, one of the proposed uses um would be a uh a small, I don't even know if it's a restaurant as much as it, it'd be like a wine bar um in the uh basement portion of that building with a single family dwelling above. And the problem with that is that the zoning for downtown ends at Franklin Street and Village starts at Franklin Street. So on one side of Franklin Street, restaurants are allowed, and on the other side of Franklin Street, restaurants are not. And um they're not asking for a contract zone. What we're looking to do is move that zone line around that property to change and incorporate that building into the downtown. Um, and I'm not asking for an answer on that tonight, but they're, they haven't closed on this property, but they're wondering if this is something you would be open to discussing, or if this is something that you flat against um before they move further along. Rich, does that cover for the most part? Did I miss anything?
That's very good description, Luke.
So they're just looking to check your temperature.
Anybody have anything? Luke, do you, do you see any issues with doing that?
I don't think I do, um, but I, I really couldn't speak to what the neighborhood will say, but uh I would be open to at least taking it as far as having some public hearings and, and seeing how they, you know, if, if they are up in arms about it, then we back off. But if they are open to it, um, I don't think this is gonna be a, a loud thing like Priscilla's back in the day. I think this is gonna be a very uh upscale, nice type of thing, but you know, I, I, obviously, this is something that if you guys are open to the idea, we'd have to go through Planning Board, and then it would have to go through you guys, and there would be public hearings, and it's, it's basically, essentially, it's an ordinance change, because zoning is, is an ordinance, so.
I have no issues with it.
I don't either.
Unlike a contract zone, this is actually may produce something besides taking up a field the way I look at it also. Anybody have any concerns with at least starting the process?
Actually, with that building, um, it going out of being a school or a Masonic Hall into almost any other use, it, it would have been precluded from doing.
It's far enough away from a Reed School, isn't it?
Yes. Okay.
I don't see any objection, Luke, so if you want to go ahead and start it.
Just a little background, they're a nice young couple um that have been very active in Belfast business. They have several businesses down there, and um I think they'd be a big asset to Bucksport if we, if we do get to welcome them to our town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Rich, nothing tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, didn't want to leave you out. All right, hearing nothing else, um, committee assignments and upcoming committee meetings? I believe we have two, Sue.
Infrastructure.
Yep.
We can do that prior to the next council meeting if you.
Yep.
Might have been on the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock will be good. Anything else? All right, next is uh budget discussion. First is the Fire Department.
We have um Public Safety Director Gagan here and um Deputy Chief Denning um and Winchester, but um who will be presenting your, your fire budget looks different than any other budget you've seen. The fire budget has three variations, um, which is status quo, um, adding two people or adding three people. Um, as I said, the the Public Safety Director and um Deputy Chiefs will be making the majority of the presentation. Shawna, you were able to share a screen there. Do you want me to share a screen um so that they can see the base page of the three options, or are you comfortable just talking about it?
Uh, it's really up to them. If you want to, if they want you to share your screen, we can do that, but it's really whatever they want.
I'd like you to share your screen, Sue, so folks out in the TV land can watch it.
Okay, give me a minute. I couldn't figure out how to do this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just uh backing up the, from one of my other budgets, from the Police Department budget, there was a question, and I was given some homework to do as far as the K-nine and the budget goes. If I could discuss that right now, just to clear that up for you, would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, what happened with that is that there's two sides to the K-nine. Um, there's a grooming side and a training side. On the grooming side, um, what needs to be done by Fair Labor Standards is a half hour a day every day, which is three and a half hours a week, which we discussed in that meeting. Um, that's a hundred and sixty-eight hours times the overtime rate of the K-nine officer, which was seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That in itself was put into the O-two line, the O-two account, which is the overtime account. The training aspect of it, um, the dog will be a multi-purpose dog, which will have two sides to him. Um, he'll have a patrol side and a truck side. Mandatory trainings for those are twice a month, um, which is ten hours a day, which will be twenty hours a month, times the twelve months is two hundred and forty hours a year. We, I put that in the budget uh under the O-four line, which is our training account, and in there, um, the total is not actually ten thousand dollars, it's eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, because we budget forty hours per officer for training a year. So I took Officer Smith's, deducted that from the two hundred and forty and come up with the two hundred hours. So those have been separated out at this point um for this budget and, and the oncoming budgets for the years to come.
Quick, quick question, Shawna. You said that his half hour of grooming was gonna be at overtime rate? I thought we heard last week from Deputy Chief Winchester that he was gonna be sent home a half hour early, and that would be part of his working shift.
It, that was an option, and I could tell you I'm not out for that option, of sending people home a half hour early to do that. Um, we, we, if that happens, the chances of us calling somebody back in to cover that shift, if we have a two-person call, um, it's gonna double the money, so. I, I'm not out for side deals, but if he's working a shift, I believe he should be working a shift, be paying for it, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've been working on this, hold on. Why won't it let me pick a tab? Oh my goodness. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Sue, if you hit your little magnifying plus sign, you'll be able to see a little bit better. Might have to move it around a little bit, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dan.
Your little uh plus sign, your um magnifying glass at the bottom will blow it up.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
There we go.
Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so what we can do is, you have that up in front of you. If you look at the last three lines, if you write, you'll see the one, the regular budget with the tentative agreement that the Fire Department and the Union has with the town at this point. It's just a regular budget. The second line is adding two potential staff, and the third one is adding three potential staff. Um, what I will do is I will go over the first column with you, and then I'll explain the second and the third columns, because the only changes, obviously, to the second, the third budget are the added employees. And what that affects is the O-one line, obviously, where the employees paid out of, and the O-two line for overtime, and anything that has to do with employees, obviously, the two employees or three employees added to those lines in each budget. Um, so looking down through the, the regular budget, um, in the O-one account, which is our payroll account, um, if you look to the left, you'll see the proposed increases or the pay scales. Um, those are what are in the tentative agreement right now between the town and the Union, which she'll discuss with you later. Um, and the O-two account, which is the next line down.
Shawna, just a second. Sue, can you mute yourself or get in the background? Thank you.
Good? The better, okay. Um, in the second line, you'll see um an increase in the, in the rates overall with the employees and the holidays. Back up to the, the first line a little bit. That did change a little bit due to um the discussion we had tonight of Hannah being hired and Mr. Grindel was taken out of there, so there was still eleven percent, but there's still a little bit of re- reduction from what it was, just to a new hire over a four or five-year employee. Um, the O-three account, which is a total call payroll, and we will see some increase in that. And that increase is actually due, uh, we did do some decreases in there, so the increase, not to get confused, it's not as substantial as it would be. We actually decreased um the forty-five, when you get the forty-five hours of a full-timer, um, which is line eighty-five, we put that down to half, because of personnel. You look at the O-four line, which has a training payroll for the Fire Department, and you will see a thirteen percent proposed decrease there. The reasoning for that is that we decreased the number of employees and are the, are on call, because we truly, at this point, don't have a call ambulance department. We have a per diem department where people sign up for shifts. We have very, very few, if any, on-call ambulance people like we used to, so we did take that out, try to help the process. Um, officer salaries, the O-five line, you'll see an increase there. That's a union tentative agreement with the union. After that, if you go down through, you'll see zero percent increase of the lines down to thirty-two. We'll see an increase in that. That increase is due to the last line with the lost DMF barcoding inventory software. It's a software that we actually put in um this year that actually barcodes all of our um supplies and stuff on the ambulance, so there's a computerized system instead of a paper-type system to see what we need for supplies on the ambulance, and it actually gives you updates and what's expiring when, and so on and so forth. So we're really catching up with the times there, so that's that increase, rather than doing it by feel and by paper. You go down through the rest of it, you will see zero percent proposed increases um until you get down to line fifty-one, which is our equipment maintenance and repairs. That proposed increase is due to the ladder truck annual um inspections in service, and we're, we're hoping that that will save us money in the long run due to equipment and stuff on that, that unit. The next proposed increase is line seventy-two, that's fuel for, for our vehicles, and that's a town negotiated item. And then it goes down to the bottom of the total um proposed increase for the overall budget.
Questions?
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, you, looking at this budget, going through it, obviously, um, at first glance, there was some sticker shock, not gonna lie. Um, if you look at the lines, and, and I don't want to steal any of your thunder, Director Gagan, but looking at the, you know, if you look at the no-added staff line versus the previous budget year, you're looking at a, and I'm using round numbers, um, but I, I believe this one was thirteen point six, if I remember correctly. And then the other two lines are considerably higher, but when you break it down by line by line, what, I think what we're seeing here, other than, you know, for example, the fuel, what we're seeing here is, is the cost of, of being competitive and being a competitive employer. Um, there, there's not a surplus of firefighters in the state of Maine. Um, quite the opposite, and if we are going to remain competitive, um, we've seen some turnover. Um, we've seen some turnover in, in the staff of, so we're training them, they, 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 they have benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Where, that's the cost here um to me, and in, there's a cost in not being competitive, and we can talk about it in a number of, of fronts. So, you know, the, it comes up a lot of times with teacher contracts, if we, and, and there's a cost here to not being competitive, too. Um, maybe I'll stop there, um, except just to say that, you know, there, again, I've got to reiterate the point. There is not a surplus of firefighters, um, in the EMTs in the state of Maine. Um, and looking through this budget, um, this really is the cost of be, of remaining or getting to a place where we're competitive, um, and being able to retain employees. And some of this budget reflects turnover. Some of the increase in, in this budget, it's obvious, reflects that we have turned people over. And if we continue to turn people over, those costs will continue to exist. There is a, there is a cost benefit to retaining people, um, especially high-quality people.
Any other questions?
What, respectfully, Paul, what is our turnover rate? I mean, are we? I feel like.
We've lost three people in the last two years.
Okay. You might have explained it, but it, it got by me. So the, I see a pretty substantial increase in extra and overtime, and that increase stays the same even with added staff members? Why, why wouldn't that go down if we added staff members?
That, that is primarily the cost of per diem staff. That's, that's the biggest cost there, and if the town if the town um retains per diem, that, that's the cost of doing it on a twenty-four-seven basis. It's about a hundred and eighty-three. I, I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that's, that's the majority of that, and that moves across these, these proposals as presented. Um, primarily, if, if you remember, we had a conversation with Deputy Chief Denning and Public Safety Director Gagan some time ago about staffing, um, and, and where we stood in terms of, of what we had for people to respond to calls when they came in. And what we had done is we had started off by adding two people a number of years ago, two thousand eighteen, um, through a grant process to try and address it, and then we used, tried using per diem as a way to make sure that there was someone to respond when these calls came in, the second or the third call. And unfortunately, per diem is um are hard, if, if we're a firefighter-perimedic-rated operation, and finding people to commit to that who work in other places so that we can count on that twenty-four-seven is very difficult. This, this budget looks at what it would look like if we, it, it shows included, but maybe the compromise at some point is, are, are we better off with our own? Are we better off chasing other people's? other peoples and trying to fill those shifts? But that's a conversation you'll have when you talk about what you want your budget to look like. But, but right now, that, the biggest cost under that is that, um, twenty-four-seven per diem when they can find them.
Jimmy?
Yes, you said you lost three in the past couple of years?
Correct.
Have you replaced those three?
Yes.
Okay, uh, now, if we do not add any staff on, are we still going to be able to get the job done?
I would say, at, at this point, we always get the job done, Mr. Morrison, but I can tell you that last year, there were thirty-one times in this building where we didn't have the personnel to do the job and get an ambulance out of this building.
I'm sorry, thirty, I'm, I'm sorry, so thirty-one what?
Thirty-one times last year, we had to call other agencies to come to this building to run our ambulance system, because we are on calls, and no one to do it. So I guess the answer to your question is no.
Sean, I'm kind of curious, why you didn't have a, one staff member added, why?
Well, I'm gonna let Deputy Chief Denning explain that, because they work in battalions and crews, and I'll let him explain why there was a one.
Good evening. Um, so the question is, why we didn't have one position? The, the idea is, we work a three-platoon system, fifty-six hours a week, okay? It's a three-platoon, meaning there are three different shifts, and that covers the amount of hours per week, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days. Or asking for three is, if we don't have continuity on each shift, if you go with any less than three. So, with, with that being said, if, say we hired two, you'd still be shorthanded one shift, or say you had A crew, B crew, and C crew. A and B crew would have three people on, and your C crew would still only have two. So, the, the idea of it is to have the same amount of staffing on each crew. If you don't, each crew is going to be thirty-three point three-three percent shorthanded without that third person. And I, I will point out, under the evaluation from the Maine Fire Chiefs Association, it's in the report for continuity of each shift.
And what does that, what does that mean if we don't adhere to that?
So, what, what has happened? If we don't have a per diem on, which happens, you have two full timers here. First out ambulance call, they'll go out on the call, there's no one here, and they will put tones out for patient coverage or an additional person to meet them at the scene, so one of those people could come back. And what's happened, those two people are out of town on an ambulance run for two hours or so, and there's no one here to respond to a second or third call, so that, that's what we're trying to alleviate.
All right, I, 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 I get that, Mike. I was just curious, you referenced that report. What, what weight does that hold, or is that just a consulting-type report?
Well, it is, the report, the town approached the Maine Fire Chiefs Association to commit to do a review of our service, fire and ambulances, and I believe that was in two thousand nineteen.
The other question I have, and, and just looking at your budget, and Sean maybe can answer this. Lines two and three are typically, seems to be well overfunded, um, over the course of the last three years. Is there a chance to have some savings in those lines? I realize you guys talk about, you know, it, it, you never know what's going to happen, and it's based on calls, but I mean, historically, it looks like we have, you know, over-budgeted those lines every year since this, since this form is up here, and I'm wondering, is there a chance to at least show some savings there?
Whi- which, which lines, Mr. Stewart?
Two and three.
You mean the O-2 and the O-3 accounts?
Yeah. They, we, we, it seems like we've over-budgeted those every, every year throughout this budget. I'm wondering if there's a chance to at least show some savings in those two lines.
It's certainly something that can be looked at, um.
And I, and I, I get the argument that you never know when a fire is going to happen, or you never know when you're going to need staffing, but again, we base a lot of this on historical data, what we, how we, how we fund these things, and
Right.
you know, any, any little chance to show some savings always, always helps.
I agree. A lot of the O-2 line, the total extra and overtime, if you look at that, and you look at the specifics in that, um, the five thousand ninety-seven dollars of miscellaneous overtime is just undedicated overtime that we're not sure about that you're talking about. So, that's one line, you're, you're correct, that we can look at from time to time to, to see how much of that we use and, and cut back on it. Um, the vacation times for each employee, of course, are just that vacation time, and you add all those up, it would take it or someone's got to replace them, so. Um, and I, I know Mr. Morrison, he answered that question about that O-2 line. A lot of that has to do with vacations, holidays, holiday pay, sick days, um, things of that nature, but in that line.
I, I get all that. Yeah, I get all, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the historical numbers that we've got in there, and it seems, you know, between those two lines, we're notoriously forty, fifty thousand dollars over-budgeted, and even a, a little shave there.
Certainly something we can look at, for sure.
Line, line O-3, that call payroll, that big number in that is that per diem. And when we can't fill shifts, that money sits there, and that, that's, that's a big for some of that, and that's why in part of the discussion a- about this is perhaps evaluating our actual usage of that and, and, um, understanding that although we may say it's twenty-four-seven, that we only fill seventy-five percent of those shifts, or fifty or sixty, in budget for what we're able to do, or closer to that, instead of the full amount. That's what you're talking about, is actual use as opposed to what if. Is that correct?
Again, I'm looking at black and white numbers that say we over-budget every year. And if we can find a place to shave some of this, in the, in the times that we're in, it certainly would, uh, go a long ways.
Well, I believe also, if you, if you add positions, that that three hundred and sixty-five days of per diem, uh, if you look at that, and if you're able to cut that even in half, you're talking about one position that we're talking about, roughly, so.
Well, yeah, I, 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 I get that, that, you know, when, with the two added staff, it's about a hundred thousand dollars per person, when you add those two numbers together, which, when you figure in everything, probably accounts for a lot of that, but again, I just, I'm just looking at those numbers as something we can take a look at.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on the slide?
You, you just told us that you can't, uh, do your job without filling these other two or three staff positions. It sounds to me like we're wasting our time looking at this no-added staff thing. We probably ought to go right to the end and, and pay attention to that number.
Yep, the i- the idea of it was to present this upfront, to let you know what the union actually negotiated, what the numbers are, and these are what the numbers are if you choose not to add anybody. If you look at the face sheet that, uh, Town Manager Lassad gave you, and if you look at two staff and go down through that, and look at the end, you can tell what the difference is. At the end of that, the end results basically are along the bottom, so you can see what the difference is between the regular budget, adding two staff or adding three staff. Um, the lines themselves in the budget, um, are basically, like I said, they're the same. In the O-1 line, you're gonna add two, in the O-1 line, you'd add three. Down through there, everything that has to do with personnel has, in the O-2 line, like vacation and all that, you're gonna have two more employees added to that, or three. The next line, two employees or three. Sick time and all that, the numbers go up. Um, so the, the budgets themselves, the regular budget is without anything, and if you look at the face sheet, it will explain each line with two staff added or three.
Yes, I'm just saying that the, the bottom line is, you said that you can't do the job without these extra people, so.
But, and, and I understand what you're saying. You're asking if we can do the job, I'm letting you and the town of Oxford know that from thirty-one times last year, when people and the citizens in this town called this station, that we had to call another department to do that job. So if you want to look at the two staff or the three and cut out the no-added staff, I'm, I'm good with that.
Sean, do you have rough numbers on what that, that cost us?
The revenue loss?
Uh, revenue loss itself, I think was, what was it, Mike?
It is twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand. Uh, the average ambulance bill is six hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents, thirty-one calls.
The average run is, quote, seven hundred dollars, so
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand dollars, roughly.
And are we paying any personnel costs on top of that to the other department?
No, no, unless we had one person to help them, which obviously we didn't, because no one was here.
Yep. Time is a factor, though.
It, it, time, in this business, the ambulance side of things, time is certainly a factor.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is insurance and be- benefits?
Let me see if I can remember how I just did this. Okay, so the insurance and benefits, um, is, reflects, uh, with the line items that are significantly larger this year than last year. One is health insurance, and it's not because our rates went up dramatically. The change is that in the last year, five people changed their status from single-to-family plans, and that added a huge amount to our, uh, insurance cost, in addition to this, the small increase in premium. Um, the proposed, um, co- union contract requires additional funding from employees for, towards the cost of uh, health insurance as well. The other bigger number that you see is retirement, and that relates to the fact that, um, the public safety, police and fire have requested to change from the, the current four-N plan that they have through a main public employees retirement system to either one-C or three-C. I budgeted at one-C, it's the, which is the highest one, but we're the only town in the state that currently has four-N as a retirement plan for its public safety employees, and it is a huge, um, factor in where employees go. Virtually every other department in our region, the ones that we compete with for, um, employees, has gone to either one or three-C, um, through the main pers program, and the, that difference is the difference, and you can see on the backup, I'm just showing you the face sheet, but the backup sheet, it shows that, um, the, um, the rate of, of contribution is much higher at, at one than the other, but it, it's something that without it, w- we can't, we will not attract public safety employees. That's where I, the, the current contracts being done all around us in fire containment and virtually every other police agency as well. That's, it's there. Um, our, uh, liability insurance, um, has gone up slightly, not a huge amount. Um, and our workers' comp has gone up somewhat, um, and that's based on an accident that happened a couple of years ago to a fire person at a training, that has impacted our workers' comp rate. But this is, um, as proposed, the, the retirement and the health insurance include, uh, that if everybody stays, everybody participates and everybody, um, uh, and actually, under retirement, there's a, a couple people that should come out, whose wages should come out of it, it won't drop, drop it a lot, but who have chosen not to participate in the state retirement program.
Sue, is this based on any extra fire personnel, or is this not?
No, this is based, this, this, um, is based on, um, I, I believe that the, uh, if you look at the, the backup sheets to this face page, you'll see the impact wage-wise that would affect these things under the other, those line items on the backup portion of it. This face page is as we sit today, but the, the actual, um, other one should show you uh, the impact of adding positions to the wage pieces, and then they get multiplied by the, those factors.
I guess I don't see that on the other page.
I can't, and, and I can't see it right now, and I can't access it, but I, I have done that. I have a spreadsheet that shows what adding those does to this budget as well. I'll afford the, that to you.
Because right now, we're looking at a twenty percent increase. If we added staff members, it would probably be higher, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth. I certainly hope that we can do that in person. Um, it's a big meeting, obviously, with budget finalization, everything else, so if everything goes according to plan, we will be back in person, um, for that meeting. Last item is adjournment.
Let's do adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Have a great night, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.